Call to order, the June meeting of the Little Planning Agency. Kind of a roll call, please.
Mary Albright.
Steve Coates.
Glenn Glover.
James McPherson.
Sam Kincaid.
Susan Moss.
Melissa Ozimek.
Stan.
All right, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to it.
Second.
Am I missing something?
No.
I, yeah.
We have a big new start.
Do you not?
Do you think they could do a roll call?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
We got a motion and a second.
Come start it.
I guess one end go down.
Yes.
Here, yes, okay.
Yes.
I.
Yes.
I.
Yes.
I.
It is I, but. Yes, it's the same thing.
Like a pirate. It's a pirate town.
Should be R.
R.
Hello, yours. Yes.
And a motion to approve the minutes. I only noticed that the minutes are, times that we arrived are incorrect in the minutes. Pretty sure we did not get here at three o'clock in the afternoon last month.
So, yeah, that's something that we can have a minute or we're close to it.
And just, we've dealt with that before, that's really, that's when they log on the computer for each of you, that's really whatever time they set up, it'll pop up for you all, is what that.
Oh.
I've never noticed it before, so.
Move to approve the minute. Sorry.
Oh, here we go.
Oh.
Okay. All right, I got it worked. Yeah, it's not supposed to actually do that either.
No.
Especially blind, totally, you know.
Oh.
That's all right.
Other comments? None heard? Here we go.
This is a quasi-legislative hearing, and it's ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fort Waltham Beach, Florida, admitting chapter one, two, five, and six of the Land Development Code for food trucks and food truck courts to provide for authority, provide for severability, and provide for an effective date. Mr. Gibson will provide the presentation for staff.
Good evening, Tim Gibson, Planning Supervisor for the City of Fort Waltham Beach. So for this one, over the past several years, we've seen a real rise in food trucks and stuff pretty much all over the area, all over the state, and even over the country, they've become more and more prevalent. And with that, there's also been kind of the advent of moving away from just your traditional, what we think of as a food truck that just kind of pulls up somewhere, sells some food, drives off to another location, sells food, and just continue to do so. And we've seen them basically being set up with a multitude of food trucks in one location, you know, with kind of some common amenities and stuff, some seating and bathrooms and stuff like that for a multitude of them. And that's what we're calling those the food truck courts. And so we have seen that driving in there, and with that, really, the only guidance that we've had in our code is dealing with what was called stationary food trucks. And essentially with that one, Florida statute 509102 defines, really defines the mobile food dispensing vehicle as any vehicle that is a public food service establishment and is self-professed or otherwise movable from place to place, and includes self-contained utilities, including but not limited to gas, water, electric, and liquid waste disposal. So those are basically, the Florida statute preempts municipalities from regulating those in any kind of way. We can provide business tax receipts for those, but that's about it. As far as like governing where they go and how they operate and even doing inspections on them and stuff, the state has preempted that to DBPR, the Department of Business and Professional Regulations. However, with that definition being in there, one of the key parts of that is being self-contained utilities. We see a lot of these that are plugging into electric, plugging into water, gas, or however. And especially with the food truck courts, most of those are being built with like concrete pads, or some sort of pads for them, and then each one's got, you know, kind of like an RV park where you've got an electric plug-in and a water hookup and some things like that there. So that, once they do that, they lose their protection under Florida statute as a mobile food dispensing vehicle. And that's where we can start regulating those in there. LDC section 5.2.3 does provide some of those general guidance for the stationary food trucks, which is, we're just basically defining as if it's not a mobile food dispensing vehicle, it's stationary. But it doesn't really address a lot of the, as things have developed and stuff, this is a very old reference in the code that we wanted to update in there. Some of the changes we felt were needed throughout the code in chapter one, we wanted, part of that contains definitions, and we wanted to put food truck courts, mobile food dispensing vehicles, and stationary food trucks, just to kind of provide a standard definition in their form. Chapter two, which is our zoning and table of allowable uses, needed to be updated, basically to show where these food truck courts would be able to be operated, as well as the stationary food trucks, if they're just independent. Chapter five, which is what we have now, providing guidance in there, we wanted to update, just to kind of capture some of the current guidance that we wanted in there for the stationary food trucks. And then chapter six deals with our parking requirements in our land development code, and we wanted to establish something for these stationary food trucks or the food truck courts, because right now there's no requirement for any parking for these vehicles, so theoretically, as is now, if you've got a lot set up with seven or eight food trucks on there, per our land development code, there's no requirement for them to provide any parking for anybody to go to those, so that's why we wanted to kind of close that in there as well. With that, I've kind of walked through all the different changes in there. So in chapter one, like I said, we've defined food truck courts as any parcel of land where two or more stationary food trucks congregate to offer food or beverages for the sale of the public. So essentially, just if there's two or more of them there, we're going to call it a food truck court and make them follow those rules. If it's just one property with one stationary food truck, they'll just follow the chapter five sections in there. For mobile food dispensing vehicles, we just said that's as defined in the Florida statute. And then just to clarify, in case somebody was looking for something like a mobile food vending court, we just said see food truck court on that one. For the table of allowable uses, we went basically the same thing with very similar like restaurants and stuff where the food truck courts would be allowed. We have them currently in here proposed to be allowed in both of our mixed-use zones, MX1, MX2, as well as in our commercial zone properties, and then the mixed-business and manufacturing zone properties as well in there. And like I said, that's consistent with what we do for just brick-and-mortar restaurants as well. Next is going to be under chapter five, there's some, there's some large changes in here. Essentially, we went in here just to make sure where they were permissible. We took out the definitions and stuff that was in there, since we felt that was better in chapter one where we defined everything in there. But we did start creating some new rules in there, specifically like setback requirements and stuff, because if these things are going to be stationary, we felt they should basically meet the same thing as if you were going to build a shed or any other kind of structure on that property, we would make it meet setbacks. So if you're going to permanently place these things and hook them up, we felt that they needed to actually have some setback standards issued on there. And then stressing in there that they required a business tax receipt, there is some debate in that one. The Florida statute is regarding the mobile food vending, food dispensing vehicles, does say that basically all regulation is preempted at the state. There has been some discussion at the state level as well, as many communities out there, it has seemed to be about a 50-50 split, on communities thinking that that means that they can't even issue a business tax receipt as far as the regulating them, because it says they cannot regulate or permit. Other municipalities view it the way we do, that the business tax receipt is under Florida statute five, or 205, which is not referenced in the Florida statute regarding the mobile food dispensing vehicles. So that's where we do the business tax receipts for them, and wanted to stress it on there. We did want to kind of just provide a little bit more guidance, kind of what we're going to do with the food truck courts, stating that they needed to be on some sort of a stabilized surface out there. We just didn't want these things pulling up and plugging in, you know, in some grassy, muddy area or something like that. We wanted them to be on a stabilized location. And Florida's building code requires a bathroom for any restaurant to be provided. And that's where we wanted to make sure that that was specified in here too, just so there was no confusion in there, but that is a requirement of the Florida building code. And then, you know, again, just kind of what we're seeing with the change of times, you know, a lot of places it used to be food trucks, you would see somebody walk up, they'd get their food in the go container, take it and leave and go home and eat, or whatever. But now we're seeing a lot of places that are, people are wanting to actually go there and dine there actually, which is where we really wanted to focus on making sure we have some parking requirements of three off-street parking spaces for the patrons there, and as well as a minimum of six seats per stationary food truck for there. Next, in chapter five, under our supplemental standards for specific uses, we created section 5.4.3.3 for food truck courts. And again, in there, we have a lot of the same thing where we have minimum clearances between the food trucks, that they have to have their stabilized surfaces, so basically like a concrete pad or something like that, and that those need to be separated by a minimum of 10 feet. That's part of the Florida fire code, that they need to be separated by that 10 feet. And then also basically just that the maximum number of food trucks will depend on the site size and the lot size. And that's going to be dictated more by like their parking requirements and impervious allowances and things along those lines there. Again, the setback's established in there for those, and then a requirement that each of those parking locations have an electrical and a water service provided there. Obviously, they can provide, if they wanted to have some sewer connections and some stuff like that, that some of these places do. We just felt like the electric and water were the minimum, and the reason we're requiring that at each of the locations is some of these kind of pop-up ones that we've seen are kind of big fire hazards in that they've got extension cords daisy-changin' all over the property. So you may have one or two outlets that are providing power to six or seven different food trucks, and there's just extension cords all over the place in there. So we felt by requiring them to have the electric location for each pad was going to basically reduce the use of those extension cords and make it a little safer in there. As well as we put in the requirement to have a permanent ADA available restroom for the food truck courts. Again, these are going to be the properties that are designed just for this. So while the Florida building code doesn't require a bathroom, it doesn't require it to be a permanent bathroom. So that's where you can see porta-potties and stuff popping up with some of these things. They are allowable, they do meet the requirement in there, but for the food truck courts, we didn't really want that kind of populating around the city. So that's why we put the requirement in there for them to have a permanent facility for that. And then just that the food truck court operator must provide service for the entire property, trash service. And then, basically, we're stressing in here, the code does go into sign allowances, but for the food truck court, we basically are identifying in here that the food truck court itself can have a sign identifying what it is, but what we didn't want to have is like 10 different signs up at the street for each of the 10 different food truck courts. So we're basically saying that their signage is their vehicle, and that they can have signage on their vehicles, but the food truck court itself can have one sign exhibited for the, for the entire property. And then as well, we went with the same scene of six seats per mobile vending parking location, as well as in chapter six, we defined the three parking spaces per food truck parking space in there. And then as well, since these food truck courts are being operated as a business, we wanted to stress in there again, that since they're a business themselves, as well as the food trucks, that they would require to have a business tax receipt, and that they would be required to make sure that all of their, the food trucks operating in there would get their business tax receipts as well. And that is the changes we made for this one. And with that, staff respectfully recommend local planning agency approval to recommend City Council adoption of ordinance number 2147 to amend the land development code, chapter one, two, five, and six, to update and add requirements for stationary food trucks and food truck courts.
The trucks by the car wash, is that considered a court now?
It would be, under this, under this language.
And they will need a bathroom out there?
And that's where it's going to come into some discussion, and that will really be kind of more guidance from City Council on that. They can basically require these to, give them a compliance timeline to come into compliance with these things, since this is new guidance. It could also be that they will be, for lack of a better term, grandfathered in there. The land development code does provide for existing non-conformities, so if we create something that's non-conforming now, we basically create these rules and make them as non-conforming. Since it's existing already, they are allowed to continue per our land development code. But council could declare that this is something that they have to come into compliance within a certain period of time. It's very similar to what they did, if you remember, two and a half-ish years ago, when we created the guidance for delivery vessels, and we required them to have a permanent location for check-in and checkout, and we required them to have all these different things and the signage posted and stuff. City Council gave all of the existing businesses at that point in time, two years to come into compliance with that. So it could be a similar thing with this one. But they would be considered a food truck court under this definition.
What are you seeing as the biggest issue of where these trucks are?
Right now, the biggest issue is really just they're kind of popping up wherever. And some of this is going to be in education, and some of that's why we wanted to be very clear on some of this stuff. You know, the requirements for a business tax receipt are spelled out in other places in the code of ordinance, as well as the land development code. We really just kind of wanted to get this out there so that we can really educate people on this is what a requirement is for it. We really, you know, we're finding out from our code enforcement folks that it's like, oh, by the way, there's five food truck courts on this one property over here now, or five food trucks, it's like, oh, we had no idea about them. None of them got BTRs, none of them are set up there or anything else. And then really, with a lot of those right now, they don't necessarily meet the requirements for a stationary food truck that's in there, because again, what was in there before was kind of antiquated. There's a requirement in there that basically they come in and certify every year as a stationary food truck, and it's just, it's an extreme burden for them to do that kind of registration for a stationary, and that's why we really kind of wanted to streamline this, to make it so that they can come into compliance, can register, and do it in a safe manner. So we're not trying to overburden them, but just get it to where we can actually kind of get our hands around it, so that we really know where these things are going in. And then it gives us an avenue where, like I said, the mobile ones, our fire department is even not even supposed to be doing fire inspections on them. But if we do a mobile food truck court, that's not part of the Florida statute that preempts that, so we, our fire departments and stuff, they can do inspections on there, just to kind of make it a little more safe, and just make it sure, like, they're getting our hands around and stuff, and we know what's going on where.
But as long as it moves, it doesn't, it doesn't go under this?
As long as it is self-contained utilities and is movable, yes, then it is exempt from any of our requirements in there. But theoretically, it pulls up and plugs into an extension cord somewhere, now it is no longer self-contained utilities.
Say that again.
If it's fully self-contained utilities, per Florida statute, it is exempted, it's preempted to the state, we can't regulate them or permit them in any way. However, if they take away their status as fully self-contained by either, you know, sometimes they'll run along water hoses and hook up in there, so they've got water in the building, in the truck, or they'll plug electric into it, that at that point is no longer self-contained utilities. And so they will lose that preemption under the Florida statute, and they do basically get to where we can regulate them at that point.
But you can now?
If they're fully self-contained and mobile, we cannot. Some of these ones we've seen, you know, they're really not mobile anymore. You know, they've taken the wheels off, they've got, you know, concrete blocks stacked around them, and they're just not mobile anymore, so they really wouldn't even meet the mobile definition in there. But that's going to come down to a judgment call, the easy one is whether or not they're connected to utilities.
And who do we anticipate ultimately responsible, is it the property?
In this case, yes. So right now, that's where the problem is with these things, we see these trucks popping up periodically here and there. And it, right now, the only requirement is for the food truck to get a permit or to comply with anything. The property owners themselves don't have to do anything, you know, they're charging rent for these people, I'm sure, to sit there on their property, so they're making money off of this thing, but they're not getting a business tax receipt, they're not having any requirements. This will basically kind of close that loophole and make it so that the property owners are responsible for certain things, and that they get their business tax receipt for what they're doing there.
Jim, who's in charge of people that fry foods? Who's in charge of, of probably using raw words, of making sure they're not just pouring that grease down a drain? Or that they are using clean water, not, I mean, I don't eat at food truck.
So that would be under the Department of Health, they do have a requirement for like your brick-and-mortar restaurants. It's two times a year that they have to come out and inspect, food trucks are the same. They are required to get their Department of Health inspections. Now, do they? I don't know. They are under the same requirements as a brick-and-mortar restaurant though, so they should be even posting their inspection and have them available there. They're supposed to be licensed through the Department of Health, everything else.
They are?
They are supposed to be.
Gee, still not going to eat.
And I say supposed to be, we know that not everywhere does everything they're supposed to do, so, and it's not just food trucks, it's restaurants, right? On the up and up.
I think I have a, I don't know if it's an issue of, say, that when concrete or asphalt, like, not even like crushed gravel, is unacceptable?
I believe that's written in there as an example, it just has to be a stabilized surface with the intent on that one.
It says asphalt.
Yeah, just on a stabilized surface, for example, concrete or asphalt, if it's crushed gravel, something along the line, pavers out there, however they want to do it, just as a stabilized surface.
So what is? I'm thinking more than one over by the, by the hot dog one. The Chicago dogs one?
Yeah, there's several of them back behind there, that's just, and then, that's one of the one, that I mean, there's, there's. Pretty much, benching cords all over the place and some stuff like that. It looks nice, it really does, and that's where, we're not trying to shut these things down to make these courts go away, we just kind of want to get our hands around it and make sure that they're safe.
So I can, I can see. I can see there being gray areas in that word of stabilized, whatever, so I think we obviously can find what that is.
If, I would advise y'all, make the recommendation, you either remove the IE, concrete, or asphalt, or you comprehensively try to list out, maybe crushed gravel in additional. But I think if you get rid of the IE and everything within parentheses right there, stabilized surface will be gravel, and that might be the easier way to do it, if y'all mind.
Yeah, let's take it out.
Tim, so I got a, just a general question, and so, these food truck courts, if I were to put one on my house, like at my house, and it's a residential property, is that allowed?
It will not be allowed, and that's where the changes we made in chapter two, in there on the table of allowable uses.
Just put all your pockets up.
Okay.
That's a court.
They're allowed, the food truck courts themselves, yes.
One.
But if I put two, right, on my property?
Two.
That's a food truck court, and there's some gray areas on that one as well, as far as operating the business there, at that point it becomes a home-based business. And Florida statute for home-based businesses basically says for you to operate a home-based business, you can do it, but it can't change the general appearance of the residence from being anything other than a residence. And I feel like that one would be one that would not, it would not appear to be just a general residence at that point. That would be a modification of it to make it so it's not a general residence anymore. And we would basically approach it from that aspect of the home-based business versus just trying to regulate the actual individual food truck.
I guess I see the other issues in this example, if I brought two to my house, and I let them use my water, electricity, and just did it for Fourth of July.
I mean, again, at that point, if you're operating these things out of your home, you're required to have a BTR as a home-based business?
Well, I mean, not me, personally, I don't, I just called them, and I have two or three food trucks coming to my house, and I park them there.
For like a party you're having there?
Yeah, but I keep it for a week, and maybe a long weekend, Fourth of July weekend or something.
That's where I would call my city attorney and say, I need some guidance on this one. I really think, you know, we're just really, those types of situations, we really just have to dive into it and dissect and figure out what would be the right move on those.
Talking about self-contained, I mean, it's like your boat, just because I plug it in every night doesn't mean it's not self-contained normally. But yeah, if I plug it in, I get it open, or I use the water, or I, you know, fill the, not just fill the water, but use mine.
To answer your question though, you wouldn't be offering the food beverages for sale of the public, though, even if you were at a private party where everyone wanted to pay. Like the guests, like at the wedding, which of course, that's another issue if you had a wedding, but, or if you're offering your home as a venue, but if you just had a one-off event, you wouldn't really be offering those food beverages for sale of the public, because those would be your VIPs on your property, so they would be just members of the public, they'd be your guests, and so.
Even though food trucks is no choice.
I couldn't just come crash the wedding, you know, and, and I could, everybody would trespass on your property, and you wouldn't want that, so you probably would not be violating the code.
But that's where it's going to go into the intent of it, and our code inspectors will get involved in there and stuff like that, because if you're having your, your house party for three months straight, and the food trucks happen to be on the street.
I'm just saying.
At that point, we're going to get into intent, and it would have to be dissected at that point.
So I've got another question, so, I was trying to, I was just talking and kind of reading. So is there a time period for what's considered a food truck and a food court, ID? I've got a food truck, I'm going to go to my buddy's food court, I'm going to plug in for the day, at the end of the day, I'm going to unplug and drive it home, but I'm still using his electricity, his water, am I still considered, I have to be in compliance with this?
At that point in time, really, the individual food trucks, their only requirement if they're operating in these food truck courts is to get their business tax receipt. If they get that, then essentially everything else, and that's what the intent of the food truck courts is going to be, that's why the, the locations for the food truck courts, I've always wanted to have like a stabilized surface somewhere, because that's, you're going to park your food truck here, there's where your electric is, there's where your water hookup is, right there. We know now that you're going to meet your setback requirements, we know now that you're going to have all of those requirements in there. We know it's going to be safe, you're not going to have electric cords running all over the place because it's there. So the only requirement in that type of, of an example would be that you have a business tax receipt with the city. And that's required for, regardless of the situation, even if you're just a fully mobile food truck and you're just operating, you know, one day out of the year here, you're required per our code of ordinances to have a. you're required per our code of ordinances to have a business tax receipt for the city. If you conduct any business.
And that's ultimately responsible, the person who owns the property, it's all in line, it's a food truck itself?
The, the food trucks themselves are required to have a business tax receipt. But that's where, if it's a food truck court, that's why we're kind of trying to put it on the property owners on there just to give them a little bit of responsibility in this, that they have to get their own business tax receipt. And then we're also putting it in there that they have a requirement to make sure that their trucks also have a business tax receipt. And part of that goes into Florida's statute for code enforcement and things like that. Because for code enforcement, it's really an issue between the city and the property owner. So if you've got the business on there, they can go in there and do whatever they want. It's really, at that point, becomes between the city and the property owner and stuff. And so that's why we're kind of now just trying to put some of that responsibility onto that property owner so that they, you know, because most of them are going to try to stay out of trouble, obviously.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, what, what's to prevent one from coming in and using his, remaining self-contained? Using a generator, using his own water, and that, but still in that food court?
If it's fully self-contained, then it's, it falls under the Florida statute that we can't touch it, we can't regulate it. It's still required to have a business tax receipt. We just can't regulate where it's at or any of that kind of stuff. But again, if it goes into that food truck court and it's fully self-contained, even if, if it's fully self-contained or not self-contained, it really won't be any difference with the guidance we've got in here, once they go into that. Because that puts the requirement for all those setbacks and everything like that, and the bathroom requirements, and the parking requirements, and the seating requirement. That puts it all onto the property owner, so that way those trucks can come in for a day, operate, and then leave, whether they're self-contained or connected.
I have two questions. The first one is, are we regulating where these things can be put at, like these food courts? Because what I don't want to happen is one of them be like right next to a residential house, right? So I don't need, I don't want seven food trucks right next to me, even though they're all going to be mixed-use. Mixed-use lot, you know what I mean?
I mean, ultimately, other than the zoning district requirements, there's not. And, and part of the reason for that is, I mean, if it's a mixed-use zoning district, that allows for everything from a gas station to, you know, a natural restaurant, to a nightclub, to, I mean, it could be anything there realistically. You know, and that's just kind of one of the natures of that mixed-use property, is, is that it really can be anything in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the last one is, so is it three spot, three parking spots per truck or per court?
Per truck. Or for the courts, we're requiring them to have three parking spaces per connection area. So if they have ten spots for food trucks, they're going to need to have thirty parking spaces for customers. If they're only running two food trucks out of there, they're still going to have to have established the thirty parking spaces. Because at some point in time, they intend to have the full ten, ten trucks there that will need the additional parking requirements.
So we're already very enough parking, and now we're going to require these guys to have additional parking on their property?
And that's what's really going to kind of drive the number that they can put on there. What we don't want to do is have a, have a property come in there and, and, you know, they've got exactly enough space to put fifteen food trucks on there and that's it. And they put those on there, and then they're like, ah, the customers will park wherever. And then you've got people parking on the streets, you've got people parking in other, other businesses parking on. We want them to be self-contained, just like any other business would be. We have the parking requirements in there that when they want to open up, they have to justify, we're meeting our, our parking requirements. Now, if it's somewhere like in the downtown area and there's available public parking, the code does allow, have allowances for that. They still have to meet your requirement, but you can meet that by having available public parking.
They just use the city parking lot out here?
That's being addressed by the city council. And I'll leave that there.
It's a buzzer, didn't that? Didn't mean to.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have two questions. In the permissible uses for the zoning districts, it said, I don't know, self, our stationary food trucks were allowed in recreational.
Thank you. Community facilities. And that's not necessarily the recreation ones, but that's community facilities. Sometimes that is going to be the city property, like parks and stuff like that. Most of those are its own rec, some of them aren't, it's its own, like C F, City Hall here is its own C F. It would potentially allow them to operate on those types of places. So like if the city did want to bring in food trucks over at the, the.
Like the new landing area?
Whatever.
Like the landing?
Exactly, it could be, yeah. That will have its own rec and stuff. And that would be up to the, to the Recreation Department to permit those separately from there. But it could also be, some of your C F properties are your churches and stuff. So if they want to have like a bazaar on the weekend and they want to bring in food trucks and hook them up in there, they're allowed to be there in those C F.
So it is allowed? I thought I saw that it wasn't allowed.
Well, in here, stationary food trucks and stationary food truck vendors are permissible in the MX-1, MX-2, MB, CF, CTP, and CG zoning districts.
Okay, because I had something I saw, they were not allowed in?
The food truck courts are not allowed there.
Okay.
So we're not going to obviously take like a community facility property and, and rezone it into a pure commercial use.
So are y'all, are not, what is going on at the landing? Are those not pads built for a food truck? Is that not one of the proposed uses at the landing as a food court?
So right, well, the landing's, I mean, all under construction and everything. And where that's going to go, I don't believe there's any intent there for having like a permanent setup for food trucks there. I know the Downtown Association was doing some special metal processing and stuff like that. And that's something, if it was processed as like a special event in a city park, that's where it could be potentially different in there. Because that just goes through a separate permit process to be allowed for a very fine item at a time.
Okay. And, okay, so my second question is, for the food courts, that you're saying the requirement is a bathroom?
Correct.
Would there need to be a hand washing station too? Because you're saying a porta potty would be allowed?
And again, that's going to come down to the Florida Building Code and whatever our building inspector does at that point. I do believe a hand washing station is required with the porta potty, so if they do set up a porta potty. But if we're doing a food truck court, we're requiring them to have a permanent bathroom facility.
Oh, a porta potty is not part?
For the food truck courts, we would not offer it. That, that's the requirement in there to have a permanent facility for them.
Well, tell me, a self-contained truck, could he come to the ball gagging out here and set up a self-hot dog?
They would have to be approved through the Recreation Department for that kind of stuff, because it is still city property and they're operating on city property. So they can't just come necessarily in, into the park or on the City Hall or, or the rec field or something like that and operate without approval from the city. I do know that our Recreation Department does, you know, especially like for some of the tournaments and stuff like that, they've got some like ice cream vendors and stuff that they do, they reach out to actually and say, hey, you want to set up over here? That's a separate process. The Recreation Department has a specific permitting process that they do just through rec. My department doesn't get involved in that at all. Now, those people do require business tax receipts and stuff like that. But as far as like the allowing them and when they're allowed and how often, that's managed by the Recreation Department. Any more questions?
I will move that we recommend to the city council that they adopt ordinance 2147 to amend the land development code chapters one, two, five, and six to update and add requirements for stationary food trucks and food truck courts.
Put the caveat of they found one section.
Is that part of your measure, to, to clarify the stable surface?
Yes.
Okay.
Second. If I can just clarify, um, to, what we, what you were recommending is that we just delete the IE, concrete and asphalt and leave it as just stabilized service alone?
Just a staple.
Okay. All right, motion carries.
Oh, I guess technically, can you ask for any public comments, since on the record?
Public comments?
Forgot to grab it for you.
It's full house tonight.
That's right. Ordinance 2148, this is the next quasi-legislative hearing. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Polk Beach, Florida, admitting chapters one and two of the land development code for manufacturing uses, provide for authority, provide for separability, and provide for effective date. Mr. Tim Gibson will present on behalf of staff.
So the next three ordinances are actually connected. They're obviously presented separately in that they're dealing with different things. But just to kind of give you a preface on that, the next two ordinances are amending the land development code. The third ordinance I'm going to present is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. So what the next two ordinances are for is to basically provide some of the details of what the impact of modifying the comprehensive plan is going to be. And just to kind of make sure you understand is, the comprehensive plan is what's reviewed by the state. It's really the strategic view of where we're going to go as a city. It doesn't get down in the nitty-gritty and the rules and everything like that. That's really what the land development code is for in there. But these will, the next two are going to be a little bit unusual for your LDC amendments in that we're going to bring this through for first reading. Just because we want to basically show that this is what, this is how we're going to implement these complement, comprehensive plan changes. But the second reading for these will not be for several months until the comprehensive plan is reviewed by the state and approved by the state. So these are going to be not implemented for a long period of time. We're not really required to bring them, we could have done the comprehensive plan change first. But what we didn't want to do is kind of leave it vague out there on, okay, well, why are you changing this? So we really kind of wanted to bring that, this is, this is what the nitty-gritty is going to be once those changes are made. So for manufacturing, that's a very broad term. We have found, right now, the comprehensive plan does have some specific restrictions, like in your commercial zoning district, that manufacturing is not allowed. Now, manufacturing is really, by definition, the taking of any material and modifying it into something else. You know, this could, in theory, a bakery is manufacturing. You know, they're taking raw materials, they're producing it together, and they're producing an item in there. So that's where, you know, even, but a concrete plant is also manufacturing, because they're taking the raw materials and creating concrete. So obviously, there's a big wide variance in what is manufacturing in there. And right now, the code that we have or in our LDC, it's pretty vague what's in there. And, and really what spurred this on was that we had a property that is manufacturing in that they're taking like your marble or granite slabs and they're modifying those and creating countertops out of them. By definition, that's manufacturing. Now, the one in particular here had been in operation for about a year and a half before we even knew it was there. Nobody knew about it, there was no complaints about it, there was no outside, we just didn't know that it was happening in there. It was, they did have a BTR as a countertop company, we didn't realize the actual manufacturing was happening in that building as well. Which kind of led us to down this road of, well, I mean, if it's not impacting anybody else, is it really a detriment for it to be there? And stuff, and so that's where we kind of came up with this, breaking this down. Rather than trying to say, okay, this type of manufacturing is not allowed, but fully self-contained is allowed. We really kind of wanted to take and modify that and make it by, what is the impact to your neighbors? Is really kind of where we wanted to go with this thing here. Because, you know, in our land development code right now, there are two separate references in there. There's manufacturing heavy, and in tense industrial activities, including production, fabrication, assembly, may include outdoor storage, includes bottling plants, dry cleaning plants, gas, fuel storage, and wholesaling. And then there's manufacturing light, assembly, fully enclosed building. That's it. So if it's assembled, if it's a fully enclosed building, but it's giving off noxious odors, it's still a fully enclosed building, but it's having an impact on your, on your neighbors and stuff. So that's where we really kind of wanted to just kind of clarify this on what that impact is going to be in there. So with that, we did look around at a lot of different codes. There's, there's a thing called the Planner's Dictionary, which is a really good resource planners use across the country. And it's really like, it's, it's definitions like we have in our chapter one, but it's like a ton of different municipalities providing their own definitions for what their manufacturing is. So we kind of went through there and, and picked what we felt was, was some good parts. And kind of came up with our own definitions in there for what we felt that those would be. But we really kind of wanted to basically take it so that, you know, the, the light manufacturing that they have, which is basically, there's no impact, you don't even know what's happening there, and allow those to be in our mixed-use areas. Because again, if you don't even know what's happening, is it an impact if it's happened to be manufacturing? You know, you could have a small seamstress, technically, they're manufacturing. They're taking raw fabric and creating shirts and pants or whatever with it. But we don't feel like that would have any negative impact, and so we felt like that would be appropriate to be in our mixed-use areas. Next would be our medium one, that basically we're taking it out of the, the mixed-use areas and only allowing it in the commercial and MB and CTP area. And what that one is, basically, is detectable, you can tell something's going on there, but it's not offensive. You know, it doesn't necessarily have the odors or sounds or something like that. We do still obviously have certain areas, you know, our commerce and technology part and our mixed business and manufacturing area, that are designing for these larger manufacturing operations. And that's where we're defining those ones as heavy in there. So for the changes in here, we basically created definitions, because there were no even definitions in our code for what the different levels of manufacturing were. And for heavy, we came up with an establishment engaged in manufacturing, assembly, fabrication, packaging, or other industrial processing, processing of products primarily from extracted or raw materials for the bulk storage and handling of such products and materials, or an industrial establishment having potential to produce noise, dust, glare, odors, or vibration beyond its property line. So again, those are the ones that you're going to have that noise, odor, vibrations, sounds, and stuff like that perceptible beyond your property lines. And that's why we wanted to have that one defined in there. For light, that's predominantly from previously prepared materials or finished products or parts, including processing, fabrication, assembly, treatment, and packaging of such goods in incidental storage, sales, and distribution of such products, provided all manufacturing activities are contained entirely within the building and noise, odor, smoke, heat, glare, and vibrations resulting from the manufacturing activity are confined entirely within the building. We feel like that's the ones that you won't even know outside the building, let alone off the property. And then medium is just kind of in the middle there, that it's an activity primarily engaged in manufacturing. Production or assembly of parts produced off-site where some noise or odor may be perceptible to adjacent land uses. The assembling and packaging shall not produce noise, vibrations, hazard waste material or particulate that creates significant negative impacts to adjacent land uses. For that one, in there. Next, the only other change that we have in there is in chapter two. In the definitions of what the zoning districts are, we have a definition for our commercial zoning district. And in there, it does say prohibited uses include manufacturing, distribution centers, or similar industrial activities. We're just recommending to change that to prohibit the heavy manufacture. Then after that would be our table of allowed uses, like I said, are manufacturing heavy. We're recommending that. Right now, that's only allowed on our CTP area. It's not even by definition in our code right now allowed in our mixed business and manufacturing zoning district. So we have a zoning district that's defined for manufacturing and it's not allowed to have manufacturing in it. So we're, we're basically adding that one into that one as well. Like I said, for our medium, we're just adding a commercial zoning district into that one. And then for the light, we're adding in both mixed-use zoning districts in there for that. And that is all the changes we're making in there. But to clarify a few things, our code of ordinances does have several sections in there. Our section 5.4.2 of our code of ordinances is nuisance conditions. And that section declares disagreeable or noxious odors as a nuisance. And it also has in there some sections for noises. And that's going to really depend on decibel levels and depends on the zoning district of the property, the zoning district of the property that's affected by it, and some different things like that. Our code enforcement officers, as well as several of our PD, are actually trained and qualified on using sound meters. And we do have sound meters that, that are provided to them. So if it does come down to a question of something is producing a loud noise or a lot of noise or repetitive or something that's disturbing the neighbors. then that's something we can go out there. And that's how those types of things, that if it's, if it's perceptible off the property limit and is considered like a, you know, a detriment to the, to the surrounding property. We do have stuff already in our, in our code of ordinances for how that is going to be dealt with. And with that, staff respectfully recommends local planning agency approval to recommend city council adoption of ordinance two one four eight, to amend the land development code chapters one and two, to amend definitions of manufacturing and update all the zoning districts based on intensity of the manufacturing.
Tim, packet page fifty-three. You see that? Packet page fifty-four. My question is, you put manufacturing, heavy, light, medium in between mobile home subjects. Why did you put that there? Wouldn't it go in another place that you could find it easier later on?
It's all alphabetical. It's just unalphabetical. So manufacture home, then manufacturing, manufacturing, then mobile home, mean high water line, mean high water line, means it's all just unalphabetical. Sorry, that's what you were asking, okay.
It was definitions, but I thought, why would you put heavy manufacturing in the middle of a mobile home building? I guess, I didn't think that was being alphabetical.
Now, I will tell you, I haven't done an LDC amendment for this. There are several areas in here where, I don't know why, but just some random non-alphabetized definition was thrown in there. I, I do plan on correcting that at some point in time in the future. It's just not one that we've, we put the effort to in there just because it, you know, the definitions are still in there, they're still valid. It's just some of them don't make sense with where they are. But we do try to just keep it as an alphabetized list of all of our definitions.
I didn't even think about out on alphabetically. I just kept going back to them. Why would they put heavy manufacturing, heavy doing to mobile home buildings?
Of course, they could change it in the future and make it modular slash manufactured buildings. And that would cut it down with the mobile home, you know.
It could.
Yeah. Future. Not necessarily for today.
I move to recommend that they, we ask the city council to adopt ordinance twenty-one forty-eight.
Before we all vote, just public comments from the public.
If you get it, we want to know.
So now we're on to ordinance number twenty-one forty-nine. And the ordinance, the city council, the city of Fort Womage, Florida, amending chapters two, four, five, and six of the land development code to establish standards for MX three mixed-use downtown high-intensity zoning district, provide for authority, provide for separability, provide for an effective date. This is a quasi legislative hearing. Sir Tim Gibson has a presentation ready for you.
Hi, for right now, I'll present from over here. What I wanted to do is just run through a short PowerPoint. We've had for this particular item, the creation of an MX three zoning district, as well as the increase of density. There's obviously a lot of confusion around that one. And, and one of the things we found was that there's just not a general understanding of what density really is. So I'm not trying to be insulting to anybody here, it's just, this is something we've run across. So what I did was just kind of take one of the briefings that we've used in our public outreach, modified it a little bit because some of it was talking about where it got came from, where we're at now, some things along those lines. But I wanted to run through this real quick just so everyone was clear on, on that. So, so what is density? And for our land development code, one point eight point two, density is simply defined as the number of residential dwellings per acre. It's calculated basically by whatever the property size is, time, whatever the maximum allowable density is, is what the maximum allowable units would be in there. It can also be confirmed as one that, like, wants to know how dense a property is. You can just modify that formula around and figure out, you know, what density number they come out to be. For this example, if it's a one point six acre property in an MX two zone district that allows for a density of thirty, that one point six times thirty is forty-eight units allowed. One thing to this, where a lot of the confusion came in is what density is not. And it has nothing to do with the size of the building. It can define basically how that building's chopped up. But for this simple example, if you've got this eight-story building here and you chop it up to be six units per floor, you're going to end up with forty-eight units on there. And that's what your density calculation would be, would be off those forty-eight units. Conversely, if you take the exact same sized building, you build larger units and you only put four units per floor, you're going to end up with thirty-two units. So a lot of people think that by increasing density, we're going to have these massively huge buildings. And, and that's what we want to make sure everybody understands is this has nothing to do with building heights, building sizes, total amount of property that can be covered. It's all going to be basically on, you know, that shell of a building. How many units can that be broken up into in there? So these are still going to have the same height restrictions. We are very regulated by that due to Eglin Air Force Base. So we're very restrictive on how high we can be. The general zoning district is a hundred and twenty feet, but it also, we've got another map that basically some of those areas is even lower than that based off of approach patterns to Eglin Air Force Base. What's driving a lot of this, and I'll get into this in the actual presentation, is our downtown master plan that was adopted back in twenty nineteen. In there, and I want to stress, this is just a concept drawing, major design group is who we contracted out with to do the downtown master plan. This is what they came up with, was what around the mound could look like. I'm sure most of you have been following the around the mound and DOT's proposals and stuff. They're getting a lot more fine tuned than what this was in twenty nineteen. But this is really just still for that same concept in there. In that downtown master plan, they identify many different districts in our downtown. That red area you're looking at right now is the downtown district. And that's what we're really going to be focusing on in there. Inside of that downtown district, everything in there is currently zoned out. There's MX two, which is our mixed-use high, or community facilities. And the community facilities is going to be the Alacite City parking lots and then the Indian Temple mound in there, or zone the CF. Right now, the maximum density in MX two is thirty with a maximum bonus provisions. You can have up to forty-five units per acre in MX two. Community facility doesn't prevent the residential, so that doesn't change. And obviously, when we do these changes to the zoning districts, we're not going to change the zonings of the community facility zones once again there. Keep this up there just so you make sure you see what I'm talking about. Okay, so for this one, again, this goes back to twenty seventeen. The city did contract out with Matrix to come up with a downtown master plan. Twenty seventeen and eighteen, they did a lot of stakeholder meetings and kind of figure out what this should look like based on that. And then city council adopted the master plan on, on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen. So then, obviously, we all know COVID happened in there. And this kind of sat for a little bit. But in that downtown master plan, there's a list of, of steps that the city should take to achieve what that master plan is. Inside of there, one of those is the creation of an MX three zoning district with a much higher density than what is currently allowed in the MX two. So with that in mind, we kind of have a lot of options that we could go with this. We could go a little more dense, a lot more dense, and everything else in there. We did open this up to a series of meetings, public meetings with people. First was back in July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. We had a town hall meeting, we're the city manager at the time, Chris Prisetti, growth management director, and then all of my planning staff and me were there as well. Presented to about sixty people who attended down there, well, well-attended. We proposed four different options in there to create a base density of either forty, forty-five, sixty, or one hundred units per acre in there. And then for that, like I said, on the one that the bonus density for MX two would be forty-five, that's defined in our city's comprehensive plan that the bonus density is one point five times whatever the base density is. So for these ones here, for example, if it was a base density of forty, the bonus density would be a base, would be a maximum of sixty. For a hundred, it would be a hundred and fifty. So that's, that's defined in the comprehensive plan that that would be one and a half times that. Based on the briefing there, we did do some surveys out on there that we opened up to the entire public, whether they attended or not. And with that, we did get thirty-eight percent, percent of the respondents did recommend the base density of a hundred. And then we had equal twenty-four point one percent of the votes were for a base density of forty or sixty. Forty-five just didn't get a whole lot of attention with only thirteen percent of the votes. So we did kind of narrow that one down, deleted out that, that forty-five option. And then we re-presented this to, there's a downtown association meeting. They have a lot of the merchants, as well as a lot of the condo association representatives and some stuff like that. And then we did some targeted outreach as well for others outside of that group just to make sure we're getting real, you know, true stakeholders. Because one of the things we found in the first one is, and we put it in the survey for them, asking them to kind of identify how they are. And some of the respondents were not even residents of the city and had no real connection to the downtown. So that's why we're like, okay, well, let's focus on some actual stakeholders that people are really going to be truly invested in this here in there. We did get fifteen people to show up at that one. We did present the three options in there. And the half of those respondents were for, recommended a hundred density in there. On November fourteenth of last year, we did conduct a workshop with city council, went over all of these results, discussed with them. There was a lot of back and forth on exactly what that density should be like. The general idea out of there was that the hundred was basically going to be the way to go, though obviously it's not had any formal city council approval. But that didn't seem to be where the bulk of the, the recommendations were at on there. So for that, we've been going back and working on all the updates and everything to make this actually a reality in there. It is a lot to create a whole new zoning district, and that's where the, the comprehensive plan is going to have to be amended to allow for this as well in there. Now, like I said, that downtown master plan did call for the MX three zoning district. And it also in there, it, it basically proposed inside that red district in there, it recommended a development of four hundred and fifty-two multifamily residential units be created in there. That was kind of what it was just kind of in there, math and figuring out how this should look down there. That's what they came up with. We did kind of our research on there based off of kind of developable space, you know, taking out the roads, how much area do we have? You know, obviously, it's not going to all be residential. And we did come out to basically around, it was like ninety-some units per acre is what would be required to meet that four hundred and fifty-two multifamily residential units down there. And that's how we'd come up with a hundred units per acre in that area. And it would have, like I said, the density bonus of a maximum of one hundred and fifty units per acre. Now, I will tell you that this is comparable with the city of Tallahassee. They do have a core area, just, you know, like what we're talking about here, where they do allow a hundred with a backbone, bonus density of up to a hundred and fifty units. They've only had, I did contact them, they've only had one development actually do that. Now, they also have a difference in there in that they don't have the parking requirements and stuff like that. So that would be something that we feel would be a little bit more prohibited here. Frankly, and this is in, with a couple of the design professionals that were in some of the public meetings with this, they basically like, you could really make it a million density or just unlimited. And realistically, with the height restriction we've got and the parking requirement of having two parking spaces per residential unit, you're going to run out of room before you run out of depth. It's realistic what this comes down to because you're also required to maintain your stormwater on site. When you start factoring all of those things in, it's really going to be kind of prohibited in there. But again, depending on how you wanted to chop this up, if you're looking more for like efficiency-type units and some stuff like that, you could obviously fit a lot more. You know, for example, one of the recent views was the Presidio. I'm sure you're all familiar with that, very large building. That is actually at a density of thirty-one units per acre. That's it. It looks like a very large building, but the average size units in there, I believe I calculated out, was about eighteen hundred square foot per unit in there. So these are obviously large condominiums versus, you know, you've got some places that have six hundred square foot apartments. You're going to fit a lot more than six hundred square foot apartments than you are eighteen hundred foot in there. So that's really what this density is going to, going to streamline in there. Again, the comprehensive plan will have to be amended. And the second reading of this would not be completed until that comprehensive plan change is going to be made. So the changes we did make, it is pretty exhaustive. I'll try to go through them as quickly as I can in here. Under chapter one, sorry, under chapter two, where we define the different zoning districts. We did create the MX three. We're calling this the mixed-use downtown high intensity. This is the exact same dish definition as our MX two. However, it does change it so that the max density is one hundred with the bonus density up to a hundred and fifty. We're also changing the floor area ratio from a, from a two point, I'm sorry, a two to a three point O with the dense, max density on, or bonus on that one of a four point five. Now, floor area ratio is, is kind of a similar calculation that we do for non-residential. Density is specifically for residential units per acre. Floor area ratio is the ratio of the number of square footage of a building to the number of square footage of the property. So for this, basically, if you have, let's just say for easy math, a three thousand square foot, very small piece of property there, with a three point O floor area ratio, you'd be able to have a three thousand square foot building on there. Obviously, you're going multiple floors, then we're going to get past the one. You know, if you had a piece of property and you built a building over one hundred percent of that floor area of one-story building, you would have a floor area ratio of a one because you have exactly the same floor area in your building and you have X square footage of the property. So that's where basically to go up, the FAR would be a maximum of three point O with the bonus density of a four point five. Again, that would be restricted by the height limitations on there and as well the impervious, well, actually not impervious because that area is allowed to be a hundred percent impervious, but with stormwater, parking, and those types of things in there as well. Next is just simply the table that, that basically allows the zoning district to be allowed in the future land use of an MU mixed-use. And then obviously, in the table of permissible uses, we have to create the entire column for an MX three and go through all of that. Now, I'll tell you, I just, you know, won't go line by line through all of those. But what I'll tell you is, we did try to keep the vast majority of these the same that's allowed in an MX two, we wanted to allow it in MX three. However, since we're talking about our core downtown in there, we did exclude a few things out of that. For example, duplexes or triplexes are allowed in MX two. We didn't feel that was appropriate in our core area where the intent is to have a higher density area down there. A duplex is not going to achieve that. Same thing, you know, this is going to be kind of our core draw for the area. We want this to really be our core downtown area. We didn't feel like alcohol or package stores would be advisable. A property devoted just simply to an ATM kiosk, it would be allowed as an accessory use, but just not a property just for an ATM kiosk. Bacon tackle, bed and breakfast, a boatyard, a car wash facility, you know, community club or lodge, dry storage for watercraft, financial institutions, fortune tellers or psychics, gas stations, funeral homes, a community garden. Again, that's if it's sole purpose was community garden. If it was something like you had a condo association and wanted a garden on the roof, that would be allowed. Hospitals, laundromats, livery vessel rentals, obviously wouldn't be allowed because there's no waterfront access there. Marinas, medical facilities for rehab, nursing homes, pawn shops. And then a lot of our indoor-outdoor recreation areas, again, if it's zoned in rec or CF, those would be allowed in MX three, they would not be. Small equipment repair shops, drive-up restaurants, school businesses, vocational schools, vehicle repair shops or body shops, and then vehicle rent. repair shops or body shops, and then vehicle rentals or watercraft rentals. We exempt those out from what would be allowed in MX two. Again, we're trying to kind of figure out what this, what should be down in there. We wanted to keep it open as much as we can, but kind of exempt some of those things that we really just didn't feel would fit down there with the direction that's going in there. Same thing with accessory uses, we exempted out a few things, docks and boat houses just simply because there is no waterfront. Candles, private candles down there, as well as just outdoor storage. Outdoor storage is one that is kind of open for discussion in there. That's something that we do allow in every zoning district. But again, if we're trying to have this core area and much of that property used as possible for actual beneficial stuff, having those just areas outdoor just for storage outside, we did not feel was recommended in there. Next, a lot of these things, I'll just kind of cover really quickly, are simply changed because the code specified certain things in, you know, like the MX one and MX two zoning district. We have to amend that, obviously, you say it's allowed in MX one, MX two and MX three zoning district. So for that one, that's where the proposed building heights, we just added the MX three in there along with the other mixed uses in there. Under the development standards for mixed-use zoning districts in chapter four, that's the one we obviously had to create the whole MX three in there. The only thing difference in here is the density and the floor area ratio that's in here, and then the minimum lot width down there. And as the downtown design overlay district specifically already says in the land development code that there is a zero setback there, we just went ahead and identified that in there, that's what that would be as well. Next is in chapter four point two, there's again just adding in the MX three to go with the other mixed-use zoning in four point two point three, the same thing, four point five point two, we did just add that in there as well. Now, in four point five point three is the table for bonus density. Like I said, you know, whatever it is right now with the MX two, you have thirty. If you do certain things, you can gain points to basically allow a higher density. That could be some stuff for installation of tankless water heaters, using seventy-five percent or more appliances or energy star rating, a whole variety of things in there. Some of it's infrastructure, some of it's individual unit stuff. And then we just basically kept a lot of those same in there. The big difference on there, we, we did really want to encourage the mix of uses within one building, so that we can kind of have that more like a restaurant, commercial, shops, whatever, and then the residential units above it. And so we did provide extra bonus points for that one. Next is the bonus score card, so basically using that table, you earn a bunch of points. And then you can look at the table, four point five point four, to see what that does change to your either density or your floor area ratio, so we did add that in there, as well as the base bonus density that we give if this is going to be a workforce housing. It's, it's a separate part of our code that gives an automatic density bonus for doing workforce housing. Next is going to be five point one point two, again, just adding the MX three to the other zoning districts in there. For the fence height standards, we added that in there, we're keeping that as the same as all the other zoning districts that are similar. Same thing for building attachments for awnings, roadside vendors, which is a good point to make on here too. Each one of these is independent, but we will layer them. So like right now, this, you know, the one for food trucks is standalone, it's changing some of the same paragraphs that this one's going to change. So it's really going to be, those changes are going to be made concurrently, so that they will both be changed with the proposed changes in there. And then for our science standards, again, keeping those the same with all of those. Like I said, the rest of this is just simply adding in where it was allowed in MX two, we wanted to allow it in MX three. And that is the changes that we have made to create the MX three zoning district. And with that, staff respectfully recommends the local planning agency approval to recommend city council adoption ordinance number two one four nine to amend the land development code chapters two, four, five and six to create standards for an MX three zoning district.
Okay, I see that you have these bonus points, one of bonus for transit passes? To occupants, you can provide transit passes, so what, to what transit?
That could be, I mean, that's just something that's in there right now theoretically that could be done through like the EC rider program and things. So a lot of that's just basically to encourage the, you know, you get that higher density, but you're going to have transportation alternatives, because I know a lot of the concerns around this is, oh my God, if we're going to put a hundred units there, that's two hundred cars, that's, you know, all this parking, there's going to be more traffic and stuff. So some of those are in there to encourage basically having less cars and fewer vehicles in there. So if you have more walkable areas, more, you know, providing transit passes and some stuff like that for people, if it was a program that they would have to establish, it would be one that would have to be recorded with us that they were going to do that. It's not one that we've seen done before, but it is an option that's been there in our code.
So then in the chart for the relationship between zoning districts and future related to that, I guess, no, permissible uses, sorry. It says no terminal, bus transit includes truck stop, that's not allowed in MX three?
The...
In the personnel uses chart?
Okay, for the terminals, bus transit, okay, that is one that is designed not for, and we're actually working, me and Mr. Burns are working on some changes to some of our code in there. And that is going to exempt down your, your local transits and stuff like that. That's more for like your big grayhound, busy grayhound stations, those types of transient stops in there, not for your local transit systems.
Okay, so can you change that wording, or can you put in that wording that it would not be local?
That, that's already works for a completely separate item. That is the intent of that one, though, is that that's talking about, you know, your, your grayhound stations and stuff like that.
That change will happen long before this ever gets back to the state too. So even though this will get passed on first reading and potentially get sent to the state, what he's talking about right there, we're going to make some changes to the bus stop issues, that's going to be long, y'all will consider that months before this stuff actually comes back.
Okay.
Probably.
Sounds too bad. It's going to be quick.
When you mentioned the alternative transportation, sidewalks, is that something that's, that there's any kind of rules for implementing when construction is done, that sidewalks have to be connected or built?
That's already in our land development code in chapter six. All sidewalks are required in that section, I don't remember the section off the top of my head. There's size requirements even based off of the road that it's on and stuff. And a lot of with our downtown area down there, the intent on that is, you know, a lot of that's going to develop as around the mound goes. And you know, like right now, highway ninety-eight, American Street Parkway, the Leflore Lane Highway that runs down there through that downtown. Once that ninety-eight is rounded up and around, we've got this wide right-of-way that we're not going to need anymore, because it's not going to be used for that transient of all that traffic on the highway, it's going to become more of a downtown road. And the intent on that is to do what we call a complete street. We're going to hopefully put in, you know, like lawn street parallel parking, we're going to have two lanes, we're going to have wide multi-use lanes, you know, for whether it's, you know, or maybe even have two vehicle lanes and then one like golf cart lane or e-bike lane, you know, stuff like that that we're going to do down there, that's the intent down in this area. But it's already a requirement right now that basically all, along all rights and ways, any new development requires sidewalks along there. Our public works director does sometimes make his decision on that, because sometimes in doing that, you know, you'll create a sidewalk to nowhere, you know, where you'll have nothing and then for one property, you've got a sidewalk. He'll make some judgment calls on those types of things, if it's required. For the MX threes area in this downtown area, he would not exempt anything down there. That's obviously going to be a requirement.
And then somewhere I read about the plug-in electric stations, are, are those, what are those considered, are those just accessories in parking lots, are those considered like good gas stations along those lines?
So there's a couple of things with those, so in our code, there's the transportation transparency exception area, the TCEA. And basically that's, if you're familiar with the delineations of our community redevelopment area, is the same thing for the TCEA. So any development in there, they basically have to do a similar thing where they earn points that kind of offset the traffic that they're going to be producing in there. And some of it doesn't necessarily offset the traffic, but it just, it requires certain things for them to achieve a certain number of points. One of the ways that they can do that is through the installation of EV parking stations and stuff like that. So that can be done as either a bonus density for them to do that. Again, that, that bonus density is just, there's a lot of different ways that you can earn points.
And this, the plug-in can be done just in parking lots, or are there specifications where you can put those in?
It would have to be with the parking. So any new development that's going to come in, they have to do a development order. And in there, they have to basically, they're defining exactly what's going to be built, what their parking lot is going to look like, if it's a parking garage, what it has going to look like. And they'll have to identify on there exactly where they're putting their EV parking stations in there. So if it was like an apartment building or condo going up, they would just have to identify, you know, they have to design their parking lot that shows they have the parking to meet the requirements for however many condo units they're putting in. And in doing that, they're going to have to provide a design of what their parking is going to look like. And they'll just identify on there that this is going to have an EV charging station on.
So just part of the parking design? So on the recommended ninety, basically ninety units per acre to meet this high density, they're still going to be required to have two parking spaces per unit?
For residential units, that is not changing. Now, our code, in full disclosure, our code does allow for what we call parking studies. And what that can be is if you have a traffic engineer that can do research on these things, because, you know, and honestly, we could see some of that. You know, if you have a small efficiency apartment, you know, you're probably not going to have, you know, two point three kids and a married couple in there, and you're not going to have two vehicles, more than likely, you know, some may, but it's less likely to be in there. And what they do with that is they go out and they will research similar projects, you know, so they'll find another place that has a similar number of efficiency units, a similar number of two-bedroom, three-bedroom, whatever is all there, they'll go in, they'll look at that and they'll evaluate that based off of, okay, what is the real need here? The two per unit is just kind of a number that we throw out there. You know, obviously, you know, I mean, that's the same for whether you've got a small six hundred square foot house, or if you've got a five thousand square foot house, you've got you and your, your five driving age kids there, and you've got seven cars on the property, it's still the two requirements that's there. So the parking study could override that and make it less than that, but there is no, the base requirement is still two per unit.
Is there no concern, like, I mean, I can't imagine this would happen, but it's just like, okay, so every acre, everybody just wants to stick a big old huge, you know, ninety unit complex on there, and now we've got a hundred and eighty times a hundred and eighty, you know, we've got all these additional cars, and I know around the mound is coming, but still, that, the area we're talking about is just a fairly small area in there. That red is not a huge area.
And now to establish this, I guess you should have talked about this earlier, this is simply establishing the zoning district. It doesn't change anything. Right now, those properties are zoned MX two, they will stay MX two until we rezone them. That rezoning will come through this board before it goes to city council to do the rezoning of those actual properties. Unlike in the other ones that, you know, you come in for a specific property rezonate that we've done in the past, or to change the future land use, this would change future land uses. This would be an area that would rezone all at once. There would still be interaction with the, with the property owners and everything like that, there's a lot of stuff that goes on with that one. It just wouldn't be a piece by piece, property by property, we'd rezone, we'd do it all at once. But that's whenever we can basically, right now, this is establishing it, and then we can make the determination, okay, when is it right to pull the trigger on actually doing the rezoning? I think the intent probably is to do it sooner than later, because again, keeping in mind that, you know, this is going to be, you know, they're not going to be able to come in and just drop, you know, a three hundred unit apartment on this, this piece of property down there and not provide for the parking, not provide for all those things. And again, like I said, there's the TCEA area that's designed that basically they will do, and there's a trip generation manual is what it's called, that is determined, okay, how many peak AM hour trips is being produced by this building, how many peak PM hours, and they have to offset that through that TCEA point generation in there. So some of that stuff requires them to install bike lanes or turn lanes and some stuff like that that can help offset some of those requirements. So it kind of all goes in one thing. Again, keeping in mind that these places are going to have to meet their stormwater, their parking, all of that stuff, before they can even go and drop this building on there. It's not going to be like you're just going to have all of a sudden six hundred new cars showing up overnight, and then there's no changes made to really accommodate for those.
The other, the last thing I had was some of the exclusions and, you know, the manufacturing that you just, you know, used bakeries as an example, that would actually be excluded in this particular case.
In this one, no, we actually do have, I forget what's, craft or, we, we have a specific one for bakeries. We, we pull them out of just the general manufacturing. I would just use that as a example that that could technically be considered a manufacturing. We have those specifically identified, you know, your, your art studios, your jewelry makers, your, you know, your bakeries, those are pulled out, artisan studios and bakeries are what we have already identified where those are allowed. Those wouldn't be allowed down there.
And no doggy daycare then?
I'm sorry?
No doggy daycare for these people then?
Not for that area, no.
Currently, there isn't many people living in that area now anyway, is there?
There's not right now.
So for a little...
Not in that specific area, once you get closer to the water, you know, we do have some condos and stuff down there. There are some residential in there, but it's, it's limited.
So if they're looking to pull the trigger sooner rather than later, then is there something in the works? Do we have some folks that are interested in developing these larger units or larger high-density places at this point?
We, we've not, okay, so we've been, there is one developer that has been in talks with us about doing something. It's, it's, it's progressed that far. We haven't seen actual plans. They did actually at a, the, the meeting we did with city council, the workshop, that developer was actually there, and they brought up some concepts of what they were looking at, kind of what, you know, conceptual drawings and stuff like that, and what it could look like there. But a lot of that's going to be up in the air as well. The, the landmark center, if you remember that development that was many, many years ago that ended up falling through, it's almost, it's not that, but it's, it's similar to that on that same property. But that's also, if you've been following the DOT around the mound, that property won't exist with that. Now, again, those are all, you know, everything's all preliminary with that right now. So we don't have anything dead set that, yes, they're waiting on this, and as soon as they do, bam, they're going to put up this X number unit apartment. It, it's not at that state right now.
Just thinking that I would think like before the round the mound was completed, which, you know, is still down the road, to see something get completed before that, like, yeah.
Well, again, that's where it's, it's going to be strategic when we do this and stuff, and we'll figure it out and stuff. So I mean, if around the mound is still just this nebulous concept, maybe it's going to happen or something like that, we may wait off on that and stuff. But once we get, you know, if we know DOT is progressing on this and it's going to be three to four years, it might be, you know, because these things don't happen overnight. And so what we don't want to do is just, you know, wait too long and then, okay, now we can do it, and then we've lost investors and stuff along the way in there. Because like I said, this, you know, it's not going to be an overnight thing that these things pop up.
The renderings that they, they actually brought renderings, I think.
They did.
There, there was that tower, from what I remember either, right? It was, it was modestly like high, right? The height of the building, like, it was not like a large, it wasn't sizing the Presidio or something.
I want to say they were five stories is what they were proposing. And a lot of what they were proposing was small efficiency apartments. And a thing to keep in mind with that one too is, there's a, there's a planning concept called New Urbanism. And in there, it, it really kind of is, is a try to get back to, and a lot of communities are using this push to get back to kind of the old-school ways, you know, where you've got, you can... to get back to kind of the old school ways, you know, where you've got, you can live, work, play, all within a walking district. You know, now we've got suburbia and, you know, you've got these large clumps of single-family residential homes and there's nothing else there. You know, so if the kids want to go, you know, I remember the kid, you know, I'd just walk two blocks up to this little convenience store on the corner in the middle of these neighborhoods and, you know, get a stick of gum or something, you know? And now we won't allow any of that kind of stuff. So that new urbanism is kind of trying to get back to that whole walkable, livable area. And that's what kind of some of this stuff could be in there. In having these residential units in this downtown area, you know, there's the option of working down there, living down there. You know, you've got a grocery store, you've got entertainment, you've got everything right there. So some of the content behind this is that, you know, it won't drive the same transportation needs as, you know, a normal development might. Again, there's no guarantees on that one, you know, people are going to do whatever they do. But that is a theory that's out there right now is that if we build these walkable little areas, your transportation needs are going to go down.
Atlanta is so neat where you can just like walk out your back door in that greenway, the greenbelt that they have and all these restaurants are just built where you could drive up, but you could just like ride your bike or walk to the back of all these restaurants. Do you know the max size, if you were to max out the 100 units? Like what's the maximum size you could build one of those units at? Since you said we're limited by space?
It's going to depend on the size of the property. So I mean, if you have a three-acre piece of property, obviously you're going to fit a lot bigger building than if you have a half-acre sized piece of property. The max height is going to be 120 feet. So you're thinking probably around 10 stories, probably, maybe 11 depending on.
10 stories and like eight, but still.
It's allowed now. Right now in MX2, which is zoned, max height is 120 feet. Which is about to height the presidio.
Of course, all we need to do is keep building taller and taller and then we can push the military farther and farther.
Well, again, anything that's going over a certain height, Eglin Air Force, it becomes a major development order. And at that point, it actually is not a staff approval anymore. It actually goes to city council and Eglin Air Force Base gets its way in on it, on whether or not it's approved. So we're never going to push anything to a point where it's going to impact Eglin. That's already built into there that we basically cannot do that. But right now, the exact same size building that's allowed now is what's going to be allowed with the MX3. There's no changes in the amount of size it can be built. This is really just a question of how many pieces it can be chomped up inside of it.
The way you were describing, you just said most of the properties are going to be limited by space because they had to be self-contained with stormwater, with the height restrictions. So I was just wondering if allowing 100 units or 100 occupancies, if that was going to get upper and if that wasn't encouraging these bonus points, you know, builders to do some of these nice things of like the efficiency rated appliance and sort of the public transit passes, if that's something in the future. So if we lowered what they could do, they would be more likely to do some of these things to get the bonus points.
True. But I mean, it's the same thing. I mean, it's, I'll tell you the proposal that was mentioned at the one city council meeting. They're hoping for 150 density.
Oh, so they think 100, they're still going to want?
So they would have to go along the full bonus density points on there to do what they were proposing to do in there. Again, it's all theoretical. They're just looking to see if they could possibly do that. All told, that was going to be a two-acre piece of property. So that would put it up to around 300, depending on the exact sizes and stuff like that, total units on there. Now again, that's very small efficiency units to do that. Like I said, I mean, this is, they're talking about a five-story building. You're not going to fit too, too many in there. And that's why I'm saying you're going to be restricted by, you know, you've got to provide a parking for it, you've got to provide the stormwater, you've got to provide, you know, actual residential units and you're limited by that.
So what size were those going to be now?
The one they proposed, I mean, was everything from studio to three-bedroom. So I mean, it was a whole variety of sizes in there.
How big is that whole area?
The area they were talking about was two acres.
No, I mean the whole zone, this MX3 zone.
Oh, I don't have that number.
I'd like to move, do recommend to city council that they adopt ordinance 2150.
Do we already have a public comments for the night? Yeah, because technically they can see each other's votes ahead of time. All right, so ordinance number 2150 and the ordinance of the city council, the city of Paulmich Florida, admitting the comprehensive plan and the city provide for consistency, provide for severability, provide for effective date. This is a quasi-legislative hearing. Mr. Tim Gibson will present up at the staff.
Hello again. So this is probably the most difficult process for us to go through that is probably one of the most straightforward as far as the changes and stuff that's going to be in there. So the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to preserve and enhance the public health, safety and welfare through the management of the growth, provisions of adequate public services and the protection of natural resources. In there, there's a multitude of elements that's dictated by Florida statute that's in there. The current comprehensive plan is the 2019 to 2029 comprehensive plan. It was adopted on May 21st, 2019. Like I said, this does go through the state and they did find it at that point on July 24th, 2019, that it was a valid plan. And it went into effect on that date there. Section 163.3177 of the Florida statute states that in accordance with the legislative intent expressed in other statutes, that governmental entities respect judicially acknowledged and constitutionally protected private property rights. Each local government shall include in its comprehensive plan a property rights element to ensure that the private property rights are considered in local design, or I'm sorry, decision-making. Right now, our comprehensive plan does not have a private property rights element. That statute was enacted after we adopted our current comprehensive plan. Now, it did go on to state in that section that each local government must adopt a property rights element in its comprehensive plan by the earlier of the date of its adoption or its next proposed plan amendment that is initiated after July 1st, 2021. This is the first amendment we're making after that date. So we're also, as well of the manufacturing in the MX3, the density changes we're doing in there, we're adding in the property elements right as required by Florida statute in there. So again, it's got some background in here about the downtown master plan and how we came up with that with the density and the changes in there as well as the manufacturing. I won't hit on that again unless you have more questions on that. So what we did revise in there is we revised the table of contents to add the fact that we're adding in that property rights element. In element A, which is the future land use, we revised the language in objective 8.1 to adopt the current future land use map. Right now, basically that's old, we make the amendments in here through you guys and then on the city council for their approval to change that future land use map. But it's not actually amended permanently with the state. So basically we're taking what all those small changes we made throughout the time and adding that into the current comprehensive plan. We're also revising the language in A 1.6, which is the mixed-use land use category to allow light manufacturing activities within this land use and revising policy A 1.11 density and intensity standards to allow for the increased density and floor ratio in the mixed-use land use category for the MX3 that we're creating there. Element K is the property rights element that we are adding in there per the Florida statute. And then we've also added maps 1.1, which is the current future land use map that's in there. So again, the changes in here are fairly straightforward. We did just change the date on the one. In policy A 1.3, we simply added the word heavy because that's in the commercial future land use and it specifically prohibited in there. This land use category prohibits manufacturing, distribution centers, et cetera. We just, you know, to match what we're putting in the land development code, we just changed that to heavy manufacturing. And then for the mixed use, we didn't add in there or light manufacturing. We did change the density and the floor ratio in there. And then like I said, we added in the property rights element. In that Florida statute, it basically says you can either create your own or you can use this and provides exactly what they want it to be. And that is exactly what is in this element in here is what is straight out of the Florida statute. And again, questions? I will respectfully request a local planning agency make a recommendation to city council to adopt ordinance 2150, amending the comprehensive plan.
I'll move to approve. Any public comment?
Public comments?
Quiet now.
All right, planning supervisor reports.
Just a, well, not a report, but a request. And you know, the LPA, they're scheduled for the first, third day of every month. We typically do not schedule one for July. Obviously, this year, July 4th is the first, third day of every month. And I don't think any of us want to come in for that on that date. We do have a couple of variances. One for certain that need to be presented to the LPA. Another one that should be coming very soon. So I'm recommending, we'll obviously have to make all the formal notifications and the newspaper ads and everything if we're going to make a special meeting. But I would like to recommend that we do a July LPA meeting on the second, third day of July. That way basically does it keep these variances hanging out there for several months until the August meet and everything else. So I just kind of want to give y'all input on if that would be meaningful to y'all.
I don't know that I'll be here for that meeting.
You've got time to change your plans. That would be the July 11th, just sort of.
That actually generally okay?
Okay, all right. That's what I will work on given that.
All right, board member reports? No reports. I did get my disclosure notice at the end of the day. Online form went pretty smoothly, so.
The what?
E5.
Your, my disclosure online.
I haven't got one yet.
You need to do this.
I had to do it too. They don't make you do it, they never listen to these attorneys official, but I did it for all. It's pretty, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, it's escape online, online.
It is a state requirement, so.
I just have a question, what is a board member report?
I just keep one.
You can bring anything you want, you know, that's permitted to LPA business, city business.
Honestly, I mean, this is basically, this agenda was kind of copied and pasted from city council. And if you've ever attended one of those, you know, that's basically where they go through and they get to kind of talk about what their thoughts are, what their things are going, what they want staff to work on, those types of things. We really just kind of wanted to carry it over into here. If there is something you guys wanted to talk about, bring up. If you see an issue or something like that, you've got every right as well to bring up issues and concerns that you see out of the city that you want us to kind of take a look at. I mean, obviously it's a little less directive than the city council telling us to go do these things, but it's still something that, you know, you have the right to bring up. Any kind of input you want.
I was telling some of them before and that the council really did take a lot of their input from one ordinance last time. And I think, Mr. McKay, you had a question about one aspect of, if the, and Tim, I don't remember the exact details because I was actually watching from home so I wasn't at the council meeting. But I think you had asked whether or not they were going to be allowed or not allowed in the CRA district, right?
Pardon?
You wanted to know if they're allowed in the CRA district in the.
Yes.
And how did the council come down on that?
They decided to, because you guys, it was initially presented that they would be not allowed in the CRA district. You guys recommended that that line be deleted from there. That was presented to city council. They decided they did want to restrict it though. And they did want that added back in.
But they did, a lawyer checked, just they did.
So it's not restricted. They are not allowed.
Right now, it's still going for second reading, which will be on Tuesday, next week. They did ask that that line be added back in there though, that they are not allowed in the CRA district.
They don't want, they want the CRA district to not be allowed to have containers for storage.
I'll say they closed the second reading on Tuesday and you are all residents of the city and welcome to attend.
And I think they will value your opinion if you show up.
I'm not going to comment. Mark it down.
More reports?
I apologize for the length of this one. These are several items that we've been, you know, if you're marking on it, it's wrong.